Domestical godliness, especially for the Christian to prioritize the plan to pray and to ask God for grace to help us do our part in building a godly home. Now, just by way of review, Ephesians 5 and Ephesians 6 are are the chapters where we could find the instructions for domestic godliness. And we have to remember that it is all part of a bigger argument of the book of Ephesians. And it is part of the argument regarding how we are to live worthy of the calling with which we have been called. Ephesians 4 verse 1 says, "I, the prisoner in the Lord, exhort you to walk worthy of the calling with which you have been called." The instructions for domestic godliness is one of the instructions given about how we are to walk worthy of the calling, or you could paraphrase that, consistent with the calling of God, which was unpacked in the early parts of Ephesians, the grace that's found in the Lord Jesus Christ. And the argument is when God saves a sinner purely by His grace in Christ, it should impact the way the person lives. It should change his life. It should make him different. And it should give him a new way of living. And we see that this response to the gospel should be, should include domestic godliness. It should even make a domestic godliness a priority. It is clear that the Lord takes it very seriously because there's a large amount of space given to how we should live godly lives in the home as a response to the gospel. Now, for H1 here, I know there are many Christians in this study from different churches even. You have to really make this a serious priority and privilege in your life. If you have received the grace of God and if you have, if you know the Lord Jesus Christ, that means you have to see how to honor this Savior in the context of the home. And so this really has a a gospel-centered grid to it. Domestical godliness is not just about having a more ethical home, having a more moral home, or even just the benefits of an orderly home. It's not just up to there. It has to go beyond that and it has to really have as its goal honoring Christ and loving Christ in the context of the home. Now, in our maybe siguro past month, maybe a month or two, we have been looking at Ephesians 5, 25 to 27 specifically. I'll read the text. It's not in the PowerPoint, so you could look at your own copies of the Bible. Ephesians 5, 25 to 26 by way of review. It says, "Husbands, love your wives, just as Christ also loved the church and gave Himself up for her, so that He might sanctify her, having cleansed her by the washing of water with the word, that He might present to Himself the church in all her glory, having no spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless." So in our, in the recent evening sessions, we have been looking at William Gouge's treatment of these verses. And we saw that the instruction in verse 25 is for husbands to love their wives. That's the heart of the instruction here. "The pattern of that love is according to the love that Christ has for the church." And so we have been looking at how Christ loved the church and what that meant and means for the Christian. We saw that Christ's love for the church means that He gave Himself up for her, verse 25. And so this is a self-giving love. This is a love that redeems and saves when we're speaking about Christ's love for the church. And we saw in these verses how this self-giving love of Christ means the good of the church, the blessing for the church, the salvation of the church. The verses show that it means that the church is sanctified because of Christ, verse 26, that He might sanctify her. This means that the church has a future hope and assurance that she will be presented to Christ in all her glory, without spot or wrinkle, holy and blameless before Him. This speaks of the glorious reality of redemption. And this is all because of the love of Christ. Christ loved the church and gave Himself up for her. Now, the thrust of the passage is to emphasize that the husband should love his wife in this way. It doesn't mean that the husband saves the wife or the husband's love for the wife saves her in the same way Christ does. That can never be done. But it means that we are to pattern our love for our wife in the same way. Now, we also extended the application as the husband is the head and takes lead in domestic godliness. This means that this pattern of love, though mainly demanded on the husband, should also be true for all family members because all Christians are called to love. All Christians are called to love their neighbor, especially those in the home. And so this sets the tone to domestic godliness that Christ's love is what flavors domestic godliness and what guides us in the home. It should be the atmosphere of the home. Now, tonight, so that's by way of review of what we've been covering in the past months. I think one or two months siguro. Tonight, we will focus on the next two verses. Now, this time I put it on the screen. These are the next two verses focused on in the section that I posted online, the pages of William Gouge and it's Ephesians 5, 28 to 29. "So," it reads, "husbands ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies. He who loves his own wife loves himself, for no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it as Christ also does the church." Now, first notice that this connects itself to the previous verses. Notice the word "so," right? This indicates, and the author helpfully points this out, that the application of the love of Christ for the church is that husbands are to love their wives. Notice how the Apostle Paul, by the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, repeats what is required of the husband, right? That's something to note. In Ephesians 5, it is said more than once for the husband to love their wives. All that was said about Christ's work that we saw in the review and in verses 25 to 27, all of that is said to encourage husbands to love their wives. Not just to show a pattern, that's part, a model to follow, but also to inspire husbands to love their wives. And so that word at the beginning of verse 28, "so," as husbands ought also to love their own wives. Now, we see here first, right, what husbands ought to do. Notice there the word "ought" and that's really in the verse, in verse 28. I just glanced at the Greek earlier. It's connected to being indebted to. So it's an obligation. So it's something not optional. And this shows us that there is a strong obligation to love. There is a strong obligation for the, laid to the husband for him to love his wife. I quote the author. He says, "Here it is laid down with a straiter charge." "Husbands ought to love their wives, so as their duty is not a matter arbitrary, left to the husband's will to do or leave it undone. There is a necessity laid upon him. He must love his wife. Woe therefore unto him if he do it not." Right? And so the author emphasizes, and this is true to what the verse is saying, that loving your wife should not be a matter of mood, what your mood is, how you feel at the moment. Now, loving your wife will include how you feel toward her, right? However, it should not depend on the liveliness of your feeling or your mood, right? So loving your wife should be a matter of obligation, responsibility to you. Now, this runs across the grain of how this world and mga love songs, mga poems, how they present what drives love. Oftentimes, love is presented as just an emotional, inspired, spontaneous, you know, response, or just something spontaneously done by a person. I feel, and it comes and goes. And so the verse shows that this should be a matter of "ought," according to the verse. We ought to do this. And so the union between husband and wife shows how this is very, very important, right? The author points out, and this he's gathering from what was said prior to Ephesians 5, 28, and even gleaning on what would be said about the husband and the wife becoming one flesh. And this shows us how close the husband and the wife are, right? He is her head, therefore she must be subject to him, right? We saw that in verse 22, "Wives be subject to your own husbands as to the Lord." But also, she is his body, therefore he must love her, right? And so just as the wife ought to subject herself to her husband because she is her head, because the wife is her body, his body, he must love her. The author says, "This example of a man's self is both a reason, the more to move husbands to love their wives, and also a rule to teach them how to love them," which we will see later. Now, the reason why the author points to the union between husband and wife, I pointed out Ephesians 5, 28, is because he makes the argument that it is to be done as he loves his own body. And though this is not yet the point for this section in verse 31, if you drop down, it speaks about the husband, the man and the woman, leaving his father and mother and joining together, and the two shall become one flesh. So that's where he's coming from with this point. That since she is his body, they are so united together, there should be a great love for the wife. So the argument given, or you could say the reason given, is that their union between, the union between the husband and the wife shows that she ought to be dear to him, right? She ought to be very dear to him. Again, the focus is mostly on the husband because that's the focus of the verse. That's who is being instructed, right? So this shows us na, our wives ought to be so dear to us. To love their own wives as their own bodies, right, as the text will show. And so this is a unique relationship, right? We do not have, if you're married, right, a closer bond, right, to our friends, our parents, our children. It cannot be said of all the relationships we have that the two has become one if you're married. So this should compel us that the obligation to love has great reason that calls for this obligation because you are the closest to one another. Now, of course, this means that we have to still cultivate that closeness. It's amazing how there's so much parallels between Christ and the church. The doctrine of the union, of union in Christ is paired up with the doctrine of communion with Christ. Union with Christ is fixed, right? It is, it will never be severed if you have been united to Christ. However, cultivating communion with Christ means your daily walk, your daily abiding, your daily experience of Him, and that ebbs and flows. That in this life, it should be cultivated. It should grow. The same is true between the husband and the wife, right? We are one. The two has, the two became one, right? "The two shall become one," Ephesians 5, 31, quoting from Genesis. But this oneness ought to still be cultivated, nurtured, protected, developed. And so this points to two implications by the author, all right? The first implication, it's not going to be on the screen. It's based on the section that I posted, is that a wife is not only as a man's body, namely his outward flesh, physical body, but as his person, his body and soul, right? That's what it means, that they are one. It's not just a physical thing. They are bonded together, body and soul. She is as his body because she was taken out of his body, Genesis 2, 23, when Adam received Eve. And because she is set under him as his body under his headship, the author says. "She is as himself by reason of the bond of marriage, which maketh one of two, in which respect a wife is commonly called man's second self." See, William Gouge says this is commonly called, probably during his day. But this is the first time for me to get that. It's probably not so as common today. I never heard this. That the woman is your second self. She is taken out of you, right? Of course, in our context, not being Adam and Eve, we are bonded because of marriage. And the point of this first implication is that our bond is not just a physical bond, right? It includes our whole person, right? That's why I do not buy into teachings that will encourage you that it's okay to have closer friends than your wife, right? Like so long as you're not sleeping with each other, it's okay to be emotionally bonded to another woman closer to your wife. That runs against the union between the husband and the wife because their union is not just a physical union. It's the union of the persons. And so that's the first implication made, and I think it's a right implication in this verse. It's not just about living together or sleeping on the same bed. It's about the persons being joined together. The second implication is that a husband, in loving his wife, loves himself. "So as the benefit of loving his wife will redound to himself as well as to his wife." The second implication will be developed more and we will look at that next week because that's part of the argument in Ephesians 5 about how he who loves his own wife loves himself, Ephesians 5, 28 at the end of the verse. And so here are some considerations based on this, right? Again, we're looking at, for those who just came in, Ephesians 5, 28. And the first thing is this teaches us that a husband's love for his wife plays an eminent role, I should have put "role" there, plays an eminent role to domestic godliness. Again, the Apostle Paul repeats it twice here. Ephesians 5, 25, "Husbands, love your wives." Ephesians 5, 28, "Husbands ought also to love their own wives." He doubles, double downs and he really emphasizes that loving our wife, right, is very crucial to domestic godliness, right? It is, it plays an eminent role. And since it does, this means that we should work on, husbands, we should work on growing in our love for our wife, right? If we pursue domestic godliness while neglecting love for our wife, it will not be attained, right? It is not consistent with the Ephesians 5 passage and instruction. And so we ought to notice here that it is a matter of working on, right? That's why the Apostle Paul de ba instructs because it should be brought to the attention of the husbands. It should be part of what we are consciously trying to cultivate, especially when we tie it into what I said in the introduction, that this is part of the response of one who has received salvation in Christ. And so we love our wives because Christ first loved us. And so let's make it a priority to love our wife with all that we try to do, implement, and set in the home, right? Like a family devotions, family worship, going to church as a family, praying together as a family, with all that we do as a means to domestic godliness. Let it not distract us from the main, one of the essential parts of domestic godliness, a husband's love for his wife, right? So I hope the husbands here, including myself, see that as the head of the house, there's much responsibility for the head of the house, right? Much of the failure in domestic godliness begins here, begins here, when we neglect love for our wife, right? And so this should also show us, this should teach us, the profound relationship between a husband and a wife, right? If there's any relationship we should invest in, cultivate, any relationship that we should strive to grow in, it should be our relationship with our wife. De ba, we are approaching the end of the year and almost done with October. And we will be coming close to assessing the year that has passed and planning for the year that will come. I hope that it is part of our assessment if we are growing in our relationship with our wife, right? And that should be the case. And that should show us, this profound relationship between husband and wife, that this should even be the gauge of how we spend our time, one of the important gauges. Of course, there are other aspects to your life and responsibility. But it, this is very important in God's eyes. This is very, very important. And so this profound relationship between husband and wife will impact our parenting. It will impact our parenting because we, 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 there is that tendency to let the family only be about the children, right? Let's stay together. Let's stay healthy because para sa, para sa children, just for the children. And I keep saying this to my wife because we're a growing family. We're expecting another boy, God willing, that having more children should bring us closer together. It should not be a competition. Now, of course, it will mean that the wife may give special attention and lalo na if infant, lalo na if, you know, very helpless pa. But it's not a competition. It should not be a competition to this core relationship of the home. And so this profound relationship between a husband and a wife is taught in our passage. Now, moving on, so those are the two considerations for that point. We're still looking at Ephesians 5, 28. Now, we're looking at the next part of it. And it has to do with this you see on the screen, "Love your own body." It says, I quote, "Husbands ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies." See that? As their own body. So the argument of verse 28 has a slight difference to verse 25 to 27. Because here, the Apostle Paul, by the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, shows the way we love our wives. Love as your own bodies. If he includes this again in verse 29, "For no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it, Jesus Christ also the church." Now, notice first, I hope you see, I hope you looked at the verse yourself. Notice first what the author points out as the contrary. So verse 29, all right, we're looking at verse 29. When it speaks about how we love our body, he begins with what is contrary, you could say what is negative. And the argument is, "For no one ever hated his own flesh." You see that? It's good to read that together with the end of verse 28. "He who loves his own wife loves himself, for no one ever hated his own flesh." So the argument begins with what is negative, that people, when they are in their right mind and in their ideal state, do not hate their own flesh, their own body. The author has a paragraph on that, na, there are exceptions due to the fall and due to the perversity of man. Na, he could do what is harmful to his body, all right? So when it says, "No one ever hated his own flesh," it doesn't mean that every single person takes care of his body as he should. So living in this world that's affected by the fall means that there are perversions. But this is speaking of what is normal, what is ideal, right? And what is common even with fallen man? The common attitude toward our body is to love it, to protect it, to nurture it. When a person is in his right mind, he does not want to destroy himself, right? So that's the first thing to notice in verse 29. "Love your own body," and he's gonna, it's going to tie up what this will mean for our love for our wife. And so the author points out the effects of love, right? The effects of love. And it shows that when a husband loves his own wife as his own body, right, loves his own wife as his own body, this will mean to nourish and to cherish her, all right? To nourish and to cherish her. Because in Ephesians 5, 28 to 29, it's showing us that the way we love our own body, all right, should, the way we love our wife should resemble how we love our own body. And so the effect of love is to nourish and cherish the wife, right? Again, verse 29, "No one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it," right? And nourishes and cherishes it. So this is, this is the argument. What you love, you nourish. What you love, you cherish. If you claim to love it, your body, and in this point, your wife, but do not nourish or cherish her, either your love is very unhealthy, growing and dimming, or there is no love existing. So this is the effect, or this is the expression, you could say, of So this is the effect, or this is the expression, you could say, of love. Now we have something added to what we have seen in the previous evenings, that this act of nourishing and cherishing is how you could pinpoint what specific acts of love will look like, right? Now the author, and I, I, I really appreciate how he distinguishes nourish and cherish, alright? And it inspired me to look up the, the, the usage in the Bible, the Greek word usage of nourish and cherish of verse 29. And he points out, the author points out, that when we're speaking about nourish, alright? We're speaking more about, uh, he, he says, I quote, "is done by food." Alright, under food, under nourish, you're nourishing her. This means that you are keeping her healthy. Under cherish, right, it, it has to do with caring for her. Now it, it's very interesting, I, I hope you're following me. Let's look at nourish, alright, first, because it's the first, it's the word, the first word that comes out in verse 29. When we say nourish, alright, we are speaking about caring for the person that the person is growing, protected, and, and, and especially for, for us Christians, growing spiritually. Note this, it is the same Greek word used in Ephesians 6, verse 4. In Ephesians 6, verse 4, it's with regard to the fathers and children. And it says, "Fathers, do not provoke your children to anger, but," here's the word for nourish, "bring them up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord." So that word, the Greek word behind bring them up, is the word nourish. And so you have a flavor of what nourishing someone looks like, right? Bring them up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord, you are guiding them, right? You are nurturing them, making sure that they are growing as a person. And so since this is an expression of love, right? He who loves his own wife loves himself. Because if you love yourself, you nourish and you cherish your own body, right? You will see to it, just like a person who is so, um, so caring for his garden, like a literal garden, making sure it's, it's, it's receiving enough water, enough sunlight. You're pruning it, you're making sure that nothing is destroying it. That should be the expression of the husband's love for his wife. The word for cherish in Ephesians 5:29, this is so nice, it's so nice, is a word related to warmth, to keep warm, right? So when you cherish someone, it has to do with valuing someone, but also caring for that person. And the picture of the Greek word behind cherish is you are making sure they are warm, protected from the cold, protected from what will harm them. And it's the same, it's, it's so consistent in the, in the scriptures because the, the same Greek word behind cherish is used in 1 Thessalonians 2, verse 7, when it speaks about Paul comparing his care for the church as a mother tenderly cares for her children. 1 Thessalonians 2:7 says, "But we proved to be gentle among you, as a nursing mother..." tenderly cares, that's the same word for cherish, cherishes her own children, right? You could picture how a mother tenderly cares, cherishes her child, her newborn child, a slight cough, a slight cry, a, a slight unnatural movement. And immediately they're alert to care for that child gently, patiently, self-denyingly. And so the passage says that as we nourish and cherish our body, we ought to do for our wife. We do not, if, if we say that we love our wives, we will not hate our wives, but nourish and cherish them in the full, full display of, of what it looks like. And notice again that the passage brings it back fittingly to Christ and the church. Look in verse 29, at the end of verse 29. "Just as Christ also the church." Because try, Christ is the ultimate example of what it looks like to love and nourish and cher- cherish the church. Christ loves us greatly because of His pure grace. And so as Christ does the church, I quote, William Gouge says, "The apostle thought that this nail of love," he calls this the nail of love, "had been fast beaten into the heads and hearts of husbands, and therefore added blow to blow, knocked it up deep even to the head, before he confirmed Christ's example with the example of ourselves." Here he confirms the example of ourselves with the example of Christ. So to give husbands a better direction for their providence towards their wives, whom they must nourish and cherish not only as their bodies, but as Christ nourishes and cherishes His church, not only with things temporal, but also with things spiritual and eternal. And so the, 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 the call, alright? And, and see, William Gouge uses in very characteristically puritanical way, very strong with words. He says, "Like a nail thou, fastened and beaten, and emphasized blow upon blow, knock," to emphasize the importance of loving our wife. And so we saw earlier in one of the considerations that domestic godliness in a way hangs here, right? How much we biblically nourish and cherish, love our wife. So some considerations in, as we conclude. This teaches us that loving our wife will mean focusing on nourishing and cherishing her, right? It's the point that's being made. If you, uh, if you want to have a principled, guided love, not just moody, uh, emotional, mushy, cheesy love, look here, because it is a strong kind of love, a love that will drive you to nourish and cherish her, right? We should work on ways, husbands, we should work on ways to build up our wife, alright? Build her up if she's in Christ as a Christian. If she is not a Christian, to reach out to her, to evangelize to her, to make sure that she's growing as a person, alright? Of course, let's remember the context, the context has been made clear, huh? Now the husband is the head, the husband is the leader. So it doesn't mean that the roles are reversed, as if the husband is the helper of the wife. No, Genesis 2 clearly shows the role of the wife as the helper to the husband, as the husband leads. But notice when you tie that in, as the husband leads, being the head of the home, it should be a leadership that promotes the building up, the nourishment, not the crushing, not the destruction, not the detriment of the wife. And this means that his leadership, our leadership, husbands, should be a leadership that cherishes her. Our headship should not be a headship that's only focused on keeping our own selves warm, right? Diba, that's the Greek word behind cherish. Basta, I'm warm, I'm comfortable. Basta, I'm solv nako, okay nako, siya let her fend for herself. May that never be. Christ is not that way to us. With our relationship with Christ, He gives everything that we need for life and godliness. And so in our leadership direction as husbands, may it promote her nourishment, her growth in Christ, and may she know that she is cherished. This also teaches us as, as a final point, that nourishing and cherishing our wife should be spiritually defined. This is an important thing, spiritually defined. Ephesians 5:29 says that nourishing and cherishing should be patterned according to how Christ does for the church, what Christ does for the church. Christ nourishes and cherishes the church. So do not let your worldly, the worldly ideologies or your personal way of nourishing and cherishing the wife define what you should do, alright? You, you should let Christ define it. Because some people could run away with this and say, "Sige, I'm gonna pamper my wife. I'm gonna give my wife anything that she wants and, and take her to the best places and, and make sure she has the best stuff," and, and as if that's nourishing and cherishing her. In, in, in many cases, that could even be to her destruction, alright? The, the worldly definition of nourishing and cherishing. No, nourishing and cherishing should be spiritually defined because it is patterned according to Christ. And so when we nourish and cherish her, we will aim at her spiritual good. We will aim at her spiritual growth, even when it means doing things that are hard or doing things that initially she may not like. And may think, alright, is, is not what nourishes or cherishes her. But so long as it is according to God's word and with the intent and the goal to make her grow in Christ, then let it be just as also Christ loved the church. And it, it's again, just as the Apostle Paul doubled, uh, he says it twice, the love your wife, he says it again, that this love should be according to the example in Christ. And this is a very important lesson in domestic godliness. I've been saying this, I say this almost every night, that it is a Christ-centered, Christ-defined, Christ-empowered pursuit. Domestic godliness should not be a matter of moralism simply or just setting up programs for the home. It may include that, oftentimes it does. But let us not forget the heart of domestic godliness, just as Christ also loved the church. And so some might feel like, ah, this is all for the husband. This is, I mean, what about the roles, the other roles, right? Now let us remember that the other roles will follow, alright? Under God's blessing, when we put first things first, our own responsibility. And hopefully it will serve as an example in the home and it will promote harmony and joy in the home as we pursue domestic godliness. Okay, so 7:45, right on time. Let's pray and then let, let's entertain questions after we pray. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for your word. And father, we thank you for the great love of Christ. And we pray, Lord, that you would help us grow in this. We pray, Father, that you would guide us to do all things that is consistent with your instructions. Father, we pray that you would bless the studies, bless the homes represented in this online meeting. Even if there are singles, we pray that this would have a, a positive impact in their lives. Thank you, Lord. We ask that you'd bless us in Jesus's name, amen. Okay. Alright, the floor is open for question and answers, if there are any. Any questions or comments? Okay, um, okay, go ahead, Deacon Bench.
So, si Cristina pala. I think.
Pass to my brother.
Yeah, go ahead. Hi Cristina, good evening.
Hi, good evening po. Um, ano po, um, meron po ako na-invite na isang friend.
Mm-hmm.
Opo, and dito po siya, so nakik- siya, ano po, relationship with the husband. Alam ko po, many times ko na po itong natanong, so gusto lang po niya ng clarification.
Okay.
Um, bagong married pa lang po siya. Opo, naiya po kasi siya eh, bagong married lang po siya. So, ayun nga po, unbeliever po 'yung husband niya.
Okay.
Pasensya na po pagpaulit-ulit, ano po, um, so tinatanong po niya sa akin, kung paano daw po niya ilili-d 'yung husband niya into Christ. Lalo na po, meron silang, um, um, parang meron siyang, merong scene na kailangan nilang i-settle po. So yun po 'yung challenge po sa kanya ngayon.
Mm-hmm.
Sana po matulungan po natin siya, opo. Marami salamat po Pastor Maui.
Yes, yes Cristina. Um, I'll, I'll open the verse so that your, your friend could hear the verse and also the others para ma-refresh. Please go to 1 Peter, because there is a verse that addresses that directly. 1 Peter, chapter 3, no? Uh, beginning in verse 1. 1 Peter 3, verse 1. "In the same way you wives be subject to your own husbands, so that even if any of them are disobedient to the word, they may be won without a word by the conduct of their wives, as they observe your pure conduct with fear. Your adornment must not be external, braiding the hair and wearing gold jewelry or putting on garments, but let it be the hidden person of the heart with the incorruptible quality of a lowly and quiet spirit which is precious in the sight of God." So we'll just end there. Notice, um, that this is addressed to wives, no? Verse 1, "You wives." And this is showing how wives are to behave toward their husbands. Be subject, verse 1, still, be subject to your own husbands, or that's also submit to your own husbands. Now notice what it says in verse 1, in that duty of wives to subject themselves to their own husbands, the difficulty of the situation Peter is pointing out. He says, "So that even if any of them are disobedient to the word, they may be won without a word." So the picture here is of a husband who is disobedient to the word. And that's oftentimes applicable to unbelievers, unbelieving husbands, because they're disobedient to the word, they do not submit to the word, they do not accept Christ, accept the gospel. And so here Peter's giving instruction, what the wife should do, alright? To win, hopefully by the grace of God, to win this disobedient, unbelieving husband. And notice it says that they may be won without a word. So it doesn't mean that you won't use words or you won't share the gospel with words. So that's not the point. The point of the emphasis here is that the conduct, the way you live your life as a wife, will win the husband, alright? And so it speaks about how the husband will observe the life of the wife and will see that the life of the wife is consistent with the truth, consistent with the gospel, and it is not an external beauty, but an internal hidden person of the heart beauty, submitted to God and submissive to her husband. And so it's showing us, no, for, for, for Christian wives married to unbelieving husbands, the importance of your conduct toward your husband. Specifically, your conduct of submission, which is very hard. So the scriptures acknowledges nga, it is hard because they are disobedient to their, to the word of God. But by your conduct, it could be a means to win the husband. it could be a means to win the husband to Christ. Now, be careful, this is not a promise that they will surely turn to Christ, right? Because some people might say, "I've been doing this" and they have not turned to Christ yet. This is not a promise. That's why it's very important, verse 5, no? "For in this way the former times the holy women also who hoped in God", so your hope is in God, your trust is in God, no matter what the result will be, your role is to fulfill your duty in submission. Now, I said it earlier na, it doesn't mean you won't use words. Words are very important to share the gospel. The gospel is news and news is understood through words. And so, with the words of a submissive wife, consistent with her conduct that honors the husband, serves the husband, and by the grace of God is consistent with that, the Lord could use that, alright? Now, other things in addition to that, that I believe the other parts of scriptures also teach. In addition to the emphasis of your conduct, remember to really pray. I think this should not be overlooked, no? This should not be overlooked. If you are already praying, continue to pray. Pray for your husband, pray for yourself, because you will be tempted not to submit because he is not obedient to the word, but that is never an excuse to be insubordinate, alright? 1 Peter 3 clearly shows that, so much prayer. Uh, and I mentioned this in the studies. Now, we once had a member in the church who has a husband, who had a husband who was an unbeliever. And what she would do to make sure she could be faithful in the gatherings of the church, is she was so consistent to make sure that there's food for her husband on a Sunday, so that while still honoring him by providing what, because he was a sickly man, so he couldn't cook for himself and all, she could still go to church while not neglecting him. So, it could happen, much prayer and some practical things you could do to hopefully win him, outside of what is already being said. Hopefully, he can go to church eventually. Hopefully, you're part of a church. I don't know your situation, hopefully you're part of a church, you have a church family, because that's also a factor to help contribute to reaching out to your husband, inviting him hopefully to church and all. But just the emphasis of your conduct, I think also should be made from the passage. Yeah, so these are general things. I don't know more specific things because I don't know your full situation, I hope it helps. Okay. Alright. Anything else, guys?
Pastor, thank you po, marami po niya lahat, opo.
Again, I don't wanna sound like, uh, uh, like it's as simple as that and that, no? That's why much prayer is needed, so pray, really pray, because it could get difficult. Uh, there's a, ano, online, "Pastor Maui, what are your thoughts on the preeminent view of marriage which does not allow for divorce under any circumstance?" So, si Kevin in the chat box says, no? I think you're saying, uh, view, the view of marriage, na, whatever be the circumstance, you cannot divorce, no? So, what do I think about that? Well, I think the solution, because the scriptures clearly teach that there are legitimate grounds for divorce, no? And there is infidelity and abandonment. Now, you find this in the teachings of Christ, in Matthew, I believe it's in, in the later parts of the Gospel of Matthew and in Corinthians, the apostle Paul speaks about it. The solution to upholding that, no? Divorce on the legitimate grounds of infidelity or abandonment, the solution is not to have a less preeminent view of marriage, a lower view of marriage. It's actually an argument for the importance of marriage, no? And the Lord made that very clear, that it is not His will that the two shall be separated, because "he whom God has joined together, let no man separate", but because of the fall and because of, and for the protection of the married couples, for their protection, the Lord allowed for the possibility of divorce on those legitimate grounds. Um, wait, there's a permanence. Ah, okay, I think it's not, it's not preeminent, sorry, permanence view of marriage. Sorry for misreading that permanence view of marriage. So, yun, I think, I'm of the conviction that there is, uh, there is a, there are legitimate grounds given infidelity and abandonment. Okay, okay. Alright, I think, I think we're complete already. All the questions have been answered. So, we'll conclude for now, God willing. Uh, we'll resume next week. And I thank you for taking your time to be here. Have a blessed night, guys. And we could conclude with a quick word of prayer. Just a quick word of prayer. Thank you, Father, for helping us in the Q and A and thank you, Father, for your word. We pray that you would help us and, Lord, make, we pray as a result of this, make it result, Father, in a stronger dedication and commitment to domestic godliness in the respective homes that we are in. Thank you, Father, for this time, in Jesus' name, amen. Alright, good night, guys. Night, thank you.
Ba-ba.
Bye Ken, bye Ken, bye Cristina.
Night, Father.
Good night. Thank you, thank you.
Pastor. So, what are you eating? Are you eating something?
Yes.
What is that? This is Kala.
That's, that's, Kita Kala darling, Auntie Kala.
Hi darling.